Welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of October 20, 2013. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a period of silent meditation.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The order of business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor of or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor plan for a future agenda. And before we start, I had a call from the federal government asking about a short presentation, real quickly, about a potential location of the Lincoln Gateway Station. So I'll let you guys come up real quick.
Thank you for allowing me to make a presentation for you this afternoon. My name is Russ Rainey. I'm a retired real estate specialist with the U.S. Postal Service. I work out of Denver, Colorado. They asked me to come back a few months ago to help dislodge the workload, if you will. We're kind of busy these days. I was supposed to be joined this afternoon by your local postmaster, Kerry Kowalski.
He's here.
Kerry and I, we've talked many times, emailed many times, but I never met him. So my part of this afternoon's meeting is short and sweet. I'm here today to formally announce that the Postal Service has approved a new project for relocating the Lincoln Gateway Station located at 5945 R Street here in Lincoln. As you probably know, the Postal Service has been experiencing a lot of change in recent years, primarily due to financial shortfalls. And as a result, we're constantly looking at ways to stop the bleeding, so to speak. The Gateway Station is a leased facility of approximately 9,500 square feet. It houses some 30 carriers as well as the retail operation. Our plan is to move the carrier operation into the main post office facility as well as the Northview Carrier Annex, thus leaving the retail portion to be reckoned with. So to that end, the project that has been approved calls for us to look for approximately 4,300 square feet of space in an existing building which could serve as the new Gateway Station. We have something we call a preferred area, which is a geographic boundary that we want to land within. And the geographic boundary, in this case, is Holdridge on the north, A Street on the south, 84th on the east, and 56th on the west. The first step in making this proposed project a reality is to engage the community and seek your input, which is the reason I'm here, of course. We're here to reach out to the community and we welcome your input. In the next 15 days from today, you have the opportunity to submit written comments to me regarding your concerns or approval of the project as you currently understand it to be after I speak. Shortly thereafter, I will send a letter to the mayor's office, which will take into account any written comments that I receive. And how you contact me is in your handout up there. In that letter, I'll outline the project and provide additional information regarding the process. In that letter, there will be information on how to appeal the project should any person object to our proposed move. If there are no objections or appeals, the next stage will be to search for space, the 4,300 square feet that I mentioned, to accommodate the new station. The community, by letters sent to the mayor, will be kept informed each step of the way. I'll be sending those letters out as the project proceeds. It'll include sites under consideration and ultimately the selected site for the station. This takes several months due to our mandated community contact process, which we refer to it as. Once the site is selected, we'll proceed to build out the space in preparation for opening business in the new location. Depending on the site that we select, that build out could take three to four months. So that's the process. I'd like to thank you for allowing us to be here, and I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Good question. Are you accepting input via email or just by written?
I'm sorry?
Are you accepting input via email or just written letters?
We'd like to have written letters, yes.
It's the postal.
It's the postal.
We are the postal service, after all. We need your business.
Trying to cheat me out of my retirement, I know.
That's why we're going down the tubes.
I have a question and maybe also a postmaster here. Kind of a tangential question, if I may, since you're here and you handle postal property. At the downtown facility at the main office that you own, I noticed that you're now leasing to the private sector, and yet you're off the tax rules. Are you intending to voluntarily put the building on the tax rules or a portion of it?
Identify yourself.
My name's Kerry Kowalski. I'm the postmaster here in Lincoln, 700 R Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68501. We actually have been contacted by the county assessor, and I've provided him all the information of the space that we have leased, as well as all the space, the entire area that's available for lease. I have not been contacted again by him on what his course of action is to put us on the tax rules or provide some type of tax bill in terms of that leased space. But the postal service at this point has no issue, as far as I'm concerned, or that I know of, with, you know, being properly assessed, whatever fees, taxes, or whatever is appropriate based on current law and postal regulation.
You won't stand behind the supremacy clause that exempts the federal government?
Again, I do not. This is probably maybe a question for Russ than me. I don't get involved.
You do realize he's not the postmaster general, so that whatever he says today could be overridden by somebody just a little bit higher up the food chain.
I personally don't know of any situation where we own the building and subleased space that we pay taxes. It's not to say it doesn't occur someplace, but I'm not aware of it.
Thank you.
So when you closed the Woods Park Station, the one at 35th and O., the peel boxes were moved to the Gateway Station, or how did that work?
Yes, when we relocated the carriers from Woods Park, we moved some of them to main office, some of them to Gateway, and we did move the post office box section for 68503 to Gateway, which it currently is housed there. When we moved to an alternative site, that box section will be moved. Nobody will be required to change their post office box number for either the 68503 or the 68505 box section that are both housed currently at Gateway.
You anticipated my question.
I did.
Yeah.
And just one clarification on Russ's comments. The carrier operations have been moved out of that facility for over a year. It was in August of 2013 that we actually made the move of the carrier operations and just maintained the retail operations and post office box service at that facility at this point.
Okay. And you are looking for leased space. Your lease at Gateway was a long time. I mean, you've had that station for, well...
Forever.
Forever.
1960-something.
Yeah. And so this new potential leased space, I guess the question is, I mean, what kind of lease arrangement do you look for when, is this a long-term?
We typically look, in this case, probably a 10-year with a 10-year option, two 5-year options. So it'll be long-term. More options if we can get them.
Okay. So you are looking?
We don't move easily.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you guys very much. Appreciate it.
All right.
Call the first. Item business, please.
First items would be our public hearing consent agenda, items 1 through 11.
Anybody who'd like to speak to these items? Staff questions? Next item, please.
All right, if not, we can vote on these items. Items 3 through 9 were introduced by Fellers.
So moved. Second.
Seconded by Don. Discussion, caller roll.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next would be our public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward, raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. Applicants or witnesses are not required to stay for the voting session. I'll call items 12 and 13. They're the application of Boulevard Bistro for a Class CK liquor license at 333 North Cotner Boulevard and the related manager application.
Come up, Lauren, please.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Do you raise your right hand, please?
Yes.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you barely believe it to be?
I swear.
Thank you.
Please state your name. You want to spell out for us, too, please?
My name is Abdell Karim Shabani. It's A-B-D-L. Karim, it's K-E-R-I-N. Last name C-H-H-I-B-V-I-N-I.
Okay. Your address, sir?
It's...
You can use your business address if you'd like to.
It's, uh... Sorry. It's 333, I'm sorry. 333 North Cotner Boulevard.
Okay. Sir, do you want to introduce yourself, too?
My name is Anthony Ditten. I'm the owner of the restaurant. My address is, again, 333 North Cotner Boulevard.
Okay. Questions? Do you want to tell us a little bit about the business?
Love to. We are opening a French bistro, which is going to serve a classic French Mediterranean-type cuisine and approximately 4,000 square foot of restaurant space. It's been two years in the making for the restaurant. We're very excited to get it open. It's been quite a spectacular time period to custom-make everything from floor tiles to walls to ceilings, and we look forward to having all of you visit us.
Okay.
Carl. Had the opportunity to meet Mr. Shabani a week ago and was really impressed with your professional background, so tell us a little bit about your journey.
I'm originally from Morocco, and I moved to France to study French cuisine for five years, moved to the United States. I was executive chef in a Moroccan-French restaurant for more than 17 years. I opened my first restaurant in Santa Barbara. I was a single father, and I met this gentleman in my restaurant, by the way, that used to come a lot to my restaurant. And my restaurant, it was one of the greatest restaurants to just meet wonderful people in Santa Barbara, California, the United States. I've been in restaurant business since I was a kid with my parents, and I always wanted to be a chef, and I was very successful. I came to Lincoln. This gentleman invited me to Lincoln to do two nights in Lincoln, and I did. And everybody was telling me, "Chef, would you please stay in Lincoln?" And after all, Anthony told me, "Please, I need you, or you are what you are." And I was teaching at the universities in Santa Barbara, teach chefs and cooks. After, I got tired of my restaurant for 18 years. I told him, "Well," because I love people in Lincoln, and they are the ones who ask me to come and be with them. I'll be there. And here I am today with you guys, and I hope that you come, guys, visit us and see who we are, what we are. It's not just about food, it's also about meeting people and giving people the best you can give from your heart. And that's a little bit my background.
Okay. Any other questions? Server training? Been through server?
Pardon?
Some of the managers been through server training?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, I do have a question. I think we've met before, and I think I remember you once telling me you had this vision of having a restaurant here. And don't you have an interesting background, maybe Conde Nast?
I have a very colorful background, yes.
Sure do I, but I'm not repeating mine.
My first business started out here in 1978 in the atrium at 12th and N Street. I had an art gallery. It was called Anthony's Gallery of Fine Art. Many of you have probably been in and recognized it. And after college, I decided to expand it and opened up galleries in Texas, in New York, Paris, Tokyo, Japan, and sold my galleries and bought a magazine. And it was Connoisseur Magazine. It was a food and wine magazine, and I fell in love with food. And that's how I met him. He was an advertiser. I went in and did an article on him and had him as an advertiser. We became friends. That was 18 years ago. So he was my first choice to bring in as a chef that could run such an operation. Now I plan on opening seven more restaurants in Lincoln because my wife and I are planning on moving back. We have a four-year-old child, and I'm in the process of transferring everything from California back here, so.
I just want to add, you know, when he asked me, he told me, "You love Lincoln, so I need you to come to Lincoln," you know? So that's one. And because of your skill, you know, you are the only one who can really give people not just food, but also the way, you know? Because in my restaurant, I used to talk to, even during the time that, and he knows, during the time that I'm in my kitchen, I go and make a tour to be sure that everybody's happy. That's one. And also, everything goes good with no problem. And for 18 years in Santa Barbara, I never had any problems, by the way. And also, I helped a lot of, I volunteered for schools for eight years in Santa Barbara, guys, you know? And I would love to do that also here in Lincoln. So that's not just cooking for adults, but also cooking for kids.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. And thank you for introducing.
Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Next item, please.
Next, I'll call items 14 and 15. They're the application of Plough Share Brewing Company for a Class L liquor license at 1630 P Street and the related manager application of Matt Stinchfield. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you, ma'am.
Council members, thank you. My name is Matt Stinchfield. I live at 3621 Everett Street in Lincoln. I'm here today to complete the final road of a long trip to get my microbrewery open in Lincoln. We opened with a Class C license on July 18th. We introduced food on August 1st, and by all accounts, we're doing a great job. We have everything but our final fire safety inspection, which is scheduled for 10 o'clock tomorrow morning. And we've been through detective briefing and food safety and so forth already. And we have beer fermenting in the tanks, and we're ready to start selling it as soon as we complete our final steps.
Any questions? Server training, you've been, everybody's been through server training?
Yes, sir. We're very proud of our record on that.
Appreciate it. Just tell us a little bit about Plough Share, could you?
It's a hybrid business model between a brew pub and a microbrewery. In other words, in the back, it's a production brewery, which will be producing draft beer for sale to wholesalers. And in the front, it's a taproom with an ice menu of local sustainable Midwest food and opportunity to try our beers.
Very well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Staff questions? Thank you. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Staff questions? Next item, please.
Next is item 16, manager application of Douglas Litz for the Old Pub at 420 South 11th Street. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you. Just state your name and address.
My name is Doug Litz. I represent 420 South 11th, the Old Pub. My partner, I kind of agreed that it'd be better if I stepped up and became manager this time. We've done a lot of improvements down there. Kind of like to have you all stop down and visit.
Tell us a little about your business.
Just kind of went in partners with Jack about a year ago, and just, we serve cocktails seven days a week, from noon to 2:00 in the morning. We have an older crowd, so we don't have a whole lot of problems. It's just a tight-knit little community bar.
I'm a little concerned when you said older crowd, you looked at John and I. We're hurt by that a little bit.
I want you to stop in.
Thank you very much. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Staff questions? Next item, please.
Next is item 17, the manager application of Kevin Reynolds for Captain Jack's at 140 North 12th Street. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Kevin Reynolds, Captain Jack's, 140 North 12th Street. Just here fixing some paperwork problems we had that manager application wasn't, the name on there wasn't what mine. I've been the manager for six years down there, and for some reason, my former partner's name has been on there, and he's no longer there, and this is just here to fix a paperwork problem, so.
Okay. Want to tell us a little bit about Captain Jack's?
Captain Jack's has been in the same location for six years. Previously before that, it was Cliffs Lounge for forever. Before, it was a smoke shop. We have a predominantly older crowd and soccer crowd. If you like USA Soccer, we're the bar to come see it at, so.
Very good. Questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Staff questions? Next item, please.
Mr. Chair, I would move approval of items 12 through 17.
Second.
Seconded by Trent. Discussion, caller roll.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next is our public hearing ordinance, the second reading. Item 18 is annexation 14005, amending the Lincoln Corporate Limits map by annexing approximately 39 acres of property generally located at Southwest 56th Street and West O Street. This is related to item 19, which is change of zone 14026, application of R&amp;D development for a change of zone from AG Agricultural District to I-1 Industrial District and H-3 Highway Commercial District on property generally located at Southwest 56th and West O Street.
To this item? Marvin, can you come right on up?
I'm Roger Schweisel.
Right into the microphone.
I'm Roger Schweisel. The only thing, the name on it is turned around. It's D and R Development instead of R and D.
Okay.
Thank you. I'll make sure we get that changed.
Any questions?
You want to tell us what we have going here?
Basically, it's where our shop's at. We've kind of outgrown the amount of ground. We've gotten the city limits, and we were parking equipment on some agricultural zone ground, and so we're trying to clean it up and get it annexed in to make it right.
Okay. Questions?
Carl. Thanks for being here and for working on this. Are you, there's a large project going on, Highway Project I-80 and North 48th and also North 56th Street. Are you involved with some or all of those?
Yes, we are. Hawkins actually got a ready-mix plant set up, which we just got a special permit for that on that ground, and then we're also doing the grading on that project.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Staff questions? Next item, please.
All right, next, under public hearing resolutions, item 20, approving Kelly's Pub as a Keno satellite site at 1318 North 66th Street.
Members of the council, my name's Katrina Coffey. I'm vice president of marketing for Big Red Keno. We're located at 11248 John Galt Boulevard in Omaha, and I have with me today the owner of Kelly's Pub, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions?
I just have one question. It's kind of tangentially related. Manager's liquor license training has expired, and there was a, the manager signed up and missed the training, but is, signed up for this coming week. We have some assurances the manager will make that training?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
I'm set up for it.
Okay.
And I will follow up on that and make sure that that happens as well.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Staff questions? Next item, please.
Next is item 21, miscellaneous 14002, approving the First Amendment to Protective Covenants for lots 1, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12, Block 4, East Mont, second addition, to allow modifications to setbacks, parking requirements, building floor area, landscape screening, and relocation of the sidewalks on property generally located at 6201 O Street.
Hi, I'm Jerry Nelson. I'm with Architectural Innovations here on behalf of the Lincoln O Street LLC Group. Basically, they have a new retail tenant for this building, and it's about 1,500 square feet larger than the existing building. So the, when we got to looking at what was on record, you know, the thought was here that the, you know, covenants really was kind of a zoning agreement, and it didn't really fall under the B1 zoning. So most of our changes really kind of bring the property into more of performance with the zoning that is currently underlying. Did bring...
Just a minute, we've got to turn it on here.
There we go.
Right now, it's the payless use store, and so we'd be coming off the east side of that with an addition. And I'm sure, as you see in your booklet, that the, probably the biggest benefit I see to what we're giving is all the landscape that we'll be adding to that corner. As you kind of go around the backside, there's a couple houses that are across the street, and so we've agreed with discussions with planning to double up the amount of landscape along that area. I think that's pretty much it.
Jonathan. So what meetings have you had with neighbors or the neighborhood association?
We sent out letters to all the neighbors within kind of that circle area, the neighbors across the street, and we also sent it to the association, but we did not have anybody show up to the meeting.
Okay.
So, really.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Staff questions?
Marvin Kraut. Well, when I see that we're just bringing this back in line with the underlying zoning, it implies somehow there was a mistake, that these protective covenants shouldn't have been put in place. There's a reason that the underlying zoning wasn't the rule in the first place, because somebody at some point must have felt that additional protection for these neighbors was appropriate. Why was it appropriate then and is not today?
I wish I could tell you, Jonathan, but there's no record of the 1975 Protective Covenants. We, I suspect that at the time, maybe there was concern of the neighborhood, because this is a larger-scale rezoning of land that included office, office development that followed East Ridge to the south and the west. And probably at the time, there was concern about would there be sufficient parking? And so I think that they established a parking requirement that was greater than what's normally required in the office zoning. I don't think it had that much to do with this retail tract at the corner, frankly, because it's the least, it has the least impact on the residential because it's on the O Street corner. the O Street corner. I think that there probably was not a twenty-five-foot setback at the time in what was, this is before nineteen seventy-nine, so it was the prior B zoning, so I think that was, but what all of the details of the negotiations between maybe the neighbors and the applicant were at the time, there's not a record about that. I think that we're confident that the current parking requirement in the B-one district will satisfy the need for the retail use, and while we're reducing the landscape setback from twenty-five feet to twenty feet, we're getting a heck of a lot of landscaping. There's very little on the site today, as you saw in the photograph, so I think it's a good deal for the neighbors. We did, this is kind of unusual because protective, we don't use something called the Protective Covenant document anymore. We didn't take it through the Planning Commission, but we did do the normal notification that we normally do and signposting that we normally do, and we received no comments, as well as asked them to hold the neighborhood meeting, which they did.
Why didn't you go through Planning Commission?
It was mostly a question of time. The applicants had a closing date that's, I think, within a few days of this time, and we felt that these, in this case, the, we haven't had these before, but we've, I think as a general rule, we would do that, but these changes were so minor, and they had had the neighborhood meeting already, I believe, so we figured that we could go ahead and take our chances with the city council directly to meet their closing requirement.
Well, I always prefer that the Planning Commission have a chance, so.
I think normally we would do that.
Yes, that makes me a little uncomfortable because I don't, you know, I always like to have some thoughtful people ahead of us in line. Not that you aren't, and I.
I never.
And so, if, you know, if you're satisfied that these changes, I do know there are other areas of town where, when commercial areas developed, certain agreements or understandings were in place, and every now and then, someone comes in and says, "Oh, we don't need this section here that's zoned residential buffering the commercial. We can move our parking lot further in or put up new signage," and I'm always reluctant to go back on that. You know, it is changing the rules later. People who buy in know what rules they're buying into in these cases, and so, and in some of those, we've had neighborhood folks and a neighborhood association weigh in and say, "No, we feel these protections are important." So I guess what weighs most heavily on me here is the fact that the Neighborhood Association was notified, and the neighbors were notified and had a chance to have input, and unless we see some other testimony today, apparently they're satisfied with these changes. That's most important to me.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you. Next item, please.
Portion, we can move into the voting session.
Let's do that, please.
Ordinance to second reading were items eighteen and nineteen. Item twenty is approving Kelly's Pub as a Keno satellite site, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Roy. Discussion, caller roll.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item twenty-one, then, is miscellaneous one-four-zero-zero-two, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, caller roll.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Ordinance's third reading, item twenty-two, is amending Title Ten of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to vehicles and traffic, introduced by Cook.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by John. Discussion, caller roll.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Ordinance's third reading, item twenty-two, is amending Title Ten of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to vehicles and traffic, introduced by Cook.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Trent.
Move to amend with motion amend number one.
Second. Seconded by Jonathan. You want to explain it?
Yeah, just on page one, after line eleven, inserts, section two is to read as follows, "All proceeds from the sale of this property shall be deposited in account seven-eight-six-six-five-point-four-two-oh-one. The MSC operations, sale of land fund."
Any discussion? John.
I just have a quick question of Steve Huck, if I may. And while you're coming up, it's just a matter of clarification. Basically, as I understand, this amendment would take the proceeds from this, or maybe you want to introduce yourself now that you're here.
Pardon me?
I probably ought to introduce yourself now that you're-
Steve Huck, City Finance Department.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that basically this provides that the proceeds from the sale of this property would go to replenish the funds that it took to move related entities out to the Experian Building or the MSC.
Yeah, it reimburses the Municipal Services Center Fund, which is an internal service fund, and we're paying operating costs, including the debt service on the bonds, out of that fund, so this supplements the rent revenue that comes into that fund with the proceeds of this land sale. And when we were calculating the rents for this upcoming, the biennium that we're actually in, we were planning on the sale taking place, and that served to keep the rents at a lesser level than they'd otherwise have to be.
So this didn't, isn't really going to pay for the move, it's going to reduce rents to the city agencies?
Well, keep them lower. We issued certificates of participation, two different issues, that paid for the actual renovations and the moves, and then the interest and principal on those certificates of participation have to be reimbursed by the rents and other income coming into the fund, and that was, those costs were approved in the operating budget for the MSC fund, with this budget that you recently adopted.
Now, originally, when this was all created, weren't we assuming or planning on getting proceeds from the sale of surplus land that would go to cover the Experian purchase?
There was testimony that there would be sale of property that would go to the MSC fund, which is what this is doing. This is the first piece of property where the proceeds have gone to that fund, if you approve this.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Caller roll, please.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Discussion on the main motion? Caller roll, please.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item twenty-four is approving a real estate sales agreement between the city and Nebco Inc., doing business as Western Sand and Gravel, authorizing the sale of approximately eight-point-four-six acres of city-owned property generally located in the Lincoln Water System wellfields, introduced by Cook.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Trent. Discussion, caller roll.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?